Hamilton County Board of Commissioners regular meeting September the 12th, 2024. I ask everyone to introduce themselves on the dais.
Chrissy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Herbie, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Ludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. We start every meeting with a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us in a silent prayer. Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to deliver all for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summerall-Dumas.
Yes. Thank you. We have some special presentations today. The first one is Council on Aging of Southwestern Ohio, Susan Burke, CEO. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak to you today. I'm Suzanne Burke, CEO of the Council on Aging. In addition to being your partner in administering the county's senior services levy, we are proud to partner with the county as a regular participant on the county's 513 Innovative Relief Bus. After submitting a proposal to serve on the bus, we were honored to be selected, and I believe we're the only agency providing direct services to older adults on the bus. Since joining the bus in 2023, we've been on board for more than 70 stops and have served 535 individuals. I want to commend Commissioner Reese for her innovation in creating the 513 Relief Bus, and to each of you for your commitment to bringing services directly to our residents. The 513 Relief Bus helped Council on Aging and many other social service organizations connect with residents we might not otherwise have been able to connect with. In fact, I have an example I can share. Marshay Watson, I think many of you have met Marshay, is in our call center and a regular on the relief bus. She told me about a woman named Bobby who visited the bus at multiple stops but never asked for help. The third time Marshay saw her, she initiated a conversation, and Bobby confided she needed help with her utility bill. Marshay was able to connect Bobby with the onsite representative for Hamilton County JFS, who worked with Duke Energy to cancel Bobby's disconnection. While we had Bobby's attention, she registered to receive $50 in free coupons to use at the local seniors farmer's market through the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. So there are many more examples like this. But for us, the Hamilton County 513 Relief Bus demonstrates a commitment on your part to directly connect with residents like Bobby, to meet them where they are, and provide services and information that can have a real impact on the quality of their life. We are honored to be a partner with you on the 513 Relief Bus and grateful for the opportunity to serve Hamilton County's older adults in this unique and innovative way. Earlier this year, we had the opportunity to nominate our partnership with the 513 Relief Bus for an Innovation Award through Inform USA. We submitted a nomination in the Cooperative Relationships category. Inform USA is a national association for organizations that provide information and referral services. It serves as the source for standards, program accreditation, and practitioner certification for the information and referral sector. Inform USA members are governmental units, 211 and 988 programs, libraries, civic organizations, and those who work in the areas of aging and disability services. COA is a member of Inform USA, and Kim Clark, our Director of Business and Community Operations, is a member of the USA Inform USA Board. In May, at Inform USA's annual conference, we learned that we won the award. We were thrilled to receive the award because of this partnership has been critical in helping our staff connect with vulnerable older adults in the community and across the county. I'm pleased to be here today to present the county commissioners with the Inform USA 2024 Innovation Award for Cooperative Relationships.
We'll come around and take a picture. We'll take a picture with you, but I want to open up to say something. We'll come around, take a picture. Open it up, Vice President Treehouse.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Suzanne, for being here. Thanks to Council on Aging for everything that you do. I mean, the beauty of the bus, and I do want to commend the idea, was Commissioner Reese's idea, but the beauty of the bus is the partnerships that are involved. I mean, it doesn't, it's not as meaningful until we get the partners in there that are responding to the needs of the community, and each community has a unique set of partners that go in. So thank you so much for your diligence and going to so many communities with the outreach effort. So really appreciate what you do.
Thank you. We sure do.
Council on Aging is just awesome. So is Marshay. I met her at another dedication. You guys do great work, and we know mobility is a major issue for seniors, and so to be able to do that and go amongst them and them not have to come to you necessarily is awesome, and the award is awesome, too. So thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
Let me just add, this is how I envisioned, to have a bus that takes services with our partners and everyone, to the people, the resources. And I want to just say that we found originally, when we had our Body Double Bus, we went out and we saw that we didn't have services for senior citizens. A lot of them showed up, they stood in lines, there were walkers and canes, and one of them said, "Where are you guys going?" They said, "Well, they don't have services for us." I said, "Wait a minute." And so we were able to come back partnering with you all, and now on our new bus, we're not turning any senior citizens away, and your team is doing an awesome job because we have these great programs, we have great opportunities, but maybe a person comes to the bus that doesn't know anything about one opportunity, they might know about another one, but now they come, they get the full service. And I've been there, and they say, "I need some help, I'm a senior." I said, "Hold on, Council on Aging is on the bus, they can help you." And they always walk out saying, "Thank you, I've been helped." So it's good to know what we're doing, and congratulations, we couldn't do without your great work, because once we send them to the person on the bus, Marshay, they have to really help the people, and what we've been seeing is that they're doing it. We had the Acting U.S. Secretary of HUD come in and said, "There's nothing like this in the country." So thank you for going after the award, letting people know what you're doing, and this partnership that we have. And we vote on funding, but now, like you said, you have another way where you can bring it to people's doorstep, so. Thank you, we're gonna come around, take a picture. Thank you so much for letting us know.
Before I leave, I just want to also thank the county for inviting us to help plan a special 513 Relief Bus event for older adults, and that will take place on September 24th at the Word of Deliverance Church in Forest Park. And then finally, September is Healthy Aging Month, so Council on Aging is proud to partner with the Relief Bus to offer this fun and informative event created specifically for the county's older adults. So thank you.
Thank you. So we want to say that date again, September the 24th, and my understanding, you guys got some great things. We got the bus, but we got a lot of extra things available for seniors on that day.
Yes.
Word of Deliverance.
It should be a fun event.
Ten to two.
Yes.
Ten to two.
Yes.
10:00 AM until 2:00 PM, and I want to reiterate, all of these services are free. Medical services, no copay, free, and I think that's so important. And thanks to your help, we've helped over 20,000 citizens through the 513 Relief Bus effort. So looking forward to September the 24th, just we'll keep putting that date out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll add this to our case of awards. We keep winning, Mr. Ludo, we keep winning them. We'll add that to it. Next, we have a proclamation. September is also National Preparedness Month in Hamilton County, and we have a proclamation to present, and I'll start it off. A proclamation proclaiming September 2024 as National Preparedness Month, whereas National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident, employee, and visitor in Hamilton County to become educated and informed about the threats and hazards that may impact the county, thus equipping them to become better able to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities against a disaster or emergency.
And whereas investing in the preparedness and education of ourselves, our families, businesses, and jurisdictions can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities, and whereas preparedness is the responsibility of every resident in Hamilton County, all households and businesses are urged to make preparedness a priority by being informed about the potential threats and hazards, making a plan to respond to those threats and hazards, and practicing that plan for understanding and clarity.
And whereas, Hamilton County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency are working to increase public awareness of disasters and emergency preparedness by hosting a Partners in Preparedness Meeting with community leaders to discuss the readiness level of Hamilton County, engaging in a robust social media preparedness campaign, and promoting the Emergency Notification System, Alert Hamilton County. And whereas this board encourages all residents, businesses, and communities to develop their own preparedness plans and sign up for the Emergency Notification System, Alert Hamilton County.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Hamilton County Commissioners, on behalf of its residents and the entire community, hereby extend their deepest gratitude and appreciation to the Hamilton County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency for their unwavering dedication to protecting the residents of Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed, that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Preparedness Month in all of Hamilton County.
Yes. I just want to say that I think it's great to see, I think she already left. To see the Council on Aging up here, I've worked ever since I took care of my father many, many years ago in his older years, worked with the Council on Aging. We now work closely with them as an agency. We just actually worked with them on an organizational wide continuity of operations plan and trained all of their employees. As you know, I believe it's the role of agencies such as theirs, government and others, that you have to continue the business that you're in while you also may be impacted, and the Council on Aging recognize that, and asked us, and we had staff help them run through an entire plan development and exercise series. So very excited to see them here. So again, it's National Preparedness Month, September every year, come back for the same thing. Again, we continue to encourage residents to be prepared for emergencies or disasters that may impact those in our community. This year, we've had severe weather after dark, which requires a certain level of preparedness. Once again, we've had flash flooding where I've never seen it before. Mount Lookout Square being a prime example, the level of flooding that happened in Mount Lookout Square all the way down Delta Avenue, that's just one of many examples where we're seeing the changing weather patterns, climate change, if you will, affecting our communities. And so we make this effort every September, well, obviously, we're making it year-round. Next month, we meet with all of our communities in our annual meeting with them, focusing on continuity of operations with our, all of our 49 communities and other community partners. And then as we move forward, we continue to work to be prepared and ensure that Hamilton County government is prepared, that we partner with, much like the 513 Bus, we have our community organizations active in disasters, our coad. We've partnered with over 50 local nonprofits and agencies to make sure that we're prepared to help residents after a disaster, taking advantage of services that are already out there. We found out during the pandemic, there are hundreds of nonprofits out there doing good work on the ground, and we want to be a partner with them as much as possible in case of any disaster. So, and as I like to say, one of our biggest pushes that we make is for have people sign up for Alert Hamilton County. We have one of the most robust alert systems in the state, if not the country, between our outdoor warning system, Alert Hamilton County. Our agency is in charge of wireless emergency alerts for man-made disasters, the Weather Service sends them out for severe weather. Obviously, you have the apps from all of our local TV stations and other media providers just over and over again, you know? And as I like to say, if you're not getting a warning in Hamilton County, you're not trying, because it's out there. And then I just want to remind you, we will be out next week at our employee event, signing people up for Alert Hamilton County. And speaking of seniors, I want to remind seniors that if they would like to sign up for Smart 91 or Alert Hamilton County, you can call our office if you're having any troubles, and we can actually register you for that system. So we just do it as a third party, and we get you set up to receive the alerts that you want to receive. So it's just, anybody can call us if they're having a problem, but since we're talking about seniors, then we're prepared to help people wherever we need to help them.
Thank you, Nick.
No, I can't say that anymore either, so I have my AARP membership.
I'll open it up, Vice President Treehouse, do you want to?
I didn't catch that glance, Commissioner, so I don't know, he could be looking at me, too. So thanks, Nick, thanks for, we do this every year, but it's a good thing to be reminded about preparedness, that this is one of those things that I think falls off the radar as people move through their daily lives, they're not thinking about preparedness necessarily, but you are, and that's what I love about you, Nick Rosley, is you're always thinking about preparedness and going the extra mile, really, with all 49 jurisdictions to make sure they understand what opportunities are available for them to help their residents and their communities get ready for whatever is coming their way in the future, whether it's flooding, or tornadoes, or, you know, whatever it is. So really appreciate your dedication to this work, it's really amazing, and glad that we are once again reminding the residents about preparedness. So thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Preparedness is just so important, we don't notice it until it's not there. So you can run back the tape for every year I've been here, and I would say, I would always say, I sleep so much better knowing that you're in charge, and your staff is in charge, and you're doing what you need to do, and keeping up to date on the new techniques and interventions and strategies that are happening nationally. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just want to say, I'll echo those words that's been said already, but Nick, when I first got elected, you were the first person sending me thousands of emails. I said, "Man, why is this guy sending me all these emails, and these technical terms, and all of that?" And I said, "Okay, this guy stays prepared." And that's the kind of person you want over preparedness, is someone who's going to give you more information. So now, over the years, you and I have our theme that I've said, that we stay ready so we don't have to get ready, and that's what I think about you and your team and what you do. And we have so many threats now. We've got all kinds of threats. We've got threats in schools, now multiple schools at the same time, but you have ongoing meetings and preparation and communication, and we're always looking to, how can we even improve on it? So I just wanted to just tell you thanks again, and glad to have someone like you to stand on top of it, and also like the fact that you've expanded. You said, "We're going to expand out to different community groups who normally don't maybe get involved in this, and help churches and different people, how can they help be prepared and also help their attendees to also be prepared?" So just wanted to give you another shout out. We're gonna come around, take a picture.
Okay.
That's if he can fit his hand through the door.
All right. I'm remiss to say, we have a great staff as well, so.
Okay, can we get everyone in the light? It's more like this way. Yes. A little bit more, sorry. Yes. You're in the shadows, and I want to get you in the light. Okay. Better. Okay. All right. All right, got it. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. We have a couple speakers, we'll open it up. Ashley Barrow, did I say that right? If not, correct me.
How y'all doing today? Very happy to be here, and I'm, what do I do?
There it is, right there.
So I've been a care coordinator for over 20 years in Hamilton County, I'm very proud. I love the 513 Relief Bus. Every time I see one, I go out there, I have a good time, but I represent individuals that are vulnerable, that are homebound, that often can't get to their recertification and apply for benefits. And so they struggle a lot of times getting to remote events, or going to like libraries and facilities, and so what we've done, we are a technology company, we're called ReAssist. We've developed a browser that allows these individuals to get connected to a landing page that then gets to these applications, so people at bedside and even at kiosks, they can basically get to these portals and fill out the applications they need. And the way we figured out how to do this is through ADA format, it's language tailored, it also allows individuals to capture their verifications within the portals, and then it erases all the information. So what we think we have developed is a framework and another add-on, I guess, like to the 513 Relief Bus, or any other service that needs to be more remote, when it comes to recertifying, applying, and then just being abreast of different resources. So I'm just here to present that to you today. Who we think would be helpful, or we can help, is maybe Public Health, Office of Reentry, Veteran Affairs, Aging, and then also disabilities, I'm sorry, developmental disabilities, a little nervous, but we think we can help these individuals in that way by use of technology, but we just don't know how to do it. So we would love to do a more formal presentation, but we don't know who to contact, who procures technology. We've been having a hard time trying to figure that out, so that's why I'm here today to present this to you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ludo, maybe Holly, if she can get her information, or who would you like?
Yeah, so, yeah, Holly can get your information, ma'am, and then we do regular sessions through our purchasing department, and our, actually, our Office of Inclusion does some, too, in terms of getting to know you, how to do business in Hamilton County type of thing, so bringing together different partners and departments to hear about the types of services that are offered by various businesses, and making sure that we're actively connecting those links. So, yeah, Holly will get your information, then someone will be reaching out to you to figure out the best time and way to plug in on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate you being here to pass that along.
Yeah, thank you very much. Our next speaker is on Zoom, Carrie Davis. Hello, can you hear us?
Hello.
Yes, hello, we can hear you.
Okay, I can barely hear you. Just recently, the residents of East Palestine announced a settlement for the toxic waste spewed all over their community of $600 million will be going to those residents. A couple weeks before that, Monsanto settled a lawsuit with the state for $80 million. And despite the fact that all this toxic hazardous waste is being dumped in Hamilton County, Hamilton County residents are getting nothing, not one dime, for housing the toxic and hazardous waste of the state of Ohio, and this is largely due to the fact that Denise Treehouse did not uphold the rules submitted to her by numerous nonprofit organizations and hundreds of residents, and I am again asking for Denise Treehouse to be immediately removed as Chair of the Solid Waste Committee for this incompetence and malfeasance related to the dumping of hazardous waste in Hamilton County for free. We charge nothing to allow these communities to dump their garbage on us when we will be responsible for taking care of that toxic waste in perpetuity. And so we need new leadership in our solid waste industry related to the National Disaster Month we're doing. Hamilton County has no plan for what to do when the international firefighters say that Rumpke is going to implode on itself. Nothing in their emergency response plan addresses the hazard of Rumpke and that fire burning for a decade. And I would love to see that department reach out to us to address what is going to happen when that mountain collapses in on itself with all that toxic waste in it that Ms. Treehouse is allowing to be brought into our community. So again, I ask for her to be removed immediately, Ms. Reese. She serves in your steed, and you have sole authority to appoint anyone you want on that committee, and I ask that you remove her immediately. We've lost the Rumpke money they built in Columbus instead of Hamilton County because Ms. Treehouse's standards for our environment in Hamilton County are so low, Rumpke didn't need to invest in Hamilton County.
Now we will open it up for comments and resolutions of Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. We have a couple of things today. I'm going to start at the bottom of my list, actually, because I think the most relevant point I'm going to make is at the bottom. So yesterday, I attended the One Ohio meeting on behalf of the county as a representative from this district related to the settlement dollars, and I also serve on the Grants Committee, and so we are Region Number Two, and Region Number Two's applications are now in front of the Grants Committee. It's taken us a very long time to get to this point, but we're finally there. They read through a few of the applications, the rest of the applications will be brought forward in September, knowing that the expectation is that at the next October meeting of the full board in the state of One Ohio, hopefully those applications will move forward and the grants will come down to this community. So it's a big inflection point for us, we've all served on the local foundation and are anxious to get this money to hit the ground. We've got really fantastic applications related to recovery and prevention, some with criminally affected individuals, and so I'm very excited to announce that hopefully in October, the grants will be approved and the money will come to Hamilton County. So that's number one. Number two, I also represented the commission at an event at Best Point. They have created a music center, it's a room that's got a lot of keyboards and, you know, both organs and pianos and other instruments. It is meant to help kids with disabilities express themselves in a way that they can't in a typical classroom. And so kids express themselves in all different ways, and the idea is that those that express themselves through music now will have a way to do that on the Best Point campus. It's really impressive. Mary Ann Cleecamp and her family, Mary Ann has passed away, actually Dawn, her husband, was there, they've dedicated this room to her, and they made a contribution to make this possible. So I went on behalf of the commission and proclaimed it her day, and it was really, it was a very moving event. There was a young man with a disability that sang, and we were all in tears. He was just so amazing. So anyway, it was just a really, it was a bright point, and I want to say that thank you to the Cleecamp family for their foresight and allowing that to happen. Additionally, there was a recognition of elected officials over at Princeton. They do this every year, we walk across the field at one of the games, so that happened over the weekend on Saturday. So thank you to those folks at Princeton for inviting us out again. Mr. Carter's the superintendent, and I do want to give him a special shout out for making us all feel welcome. And then lastly, I attended the All About Women event, the Abercrombie Group had this event at the Sharonville Convention Center, and it was very well done, a lot of women and men gathering together to talk about women's issues in the county, and these were mostly private sector individuals, and so it was good to be in the room, to hear what was being talked about, to see what's on people's minds, so happy to represent the commission at that one as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Duke.
Thank you, just a few things. Um, I participated in the weekly White House briefing, as I do every Thursday. Um, and I also, um, had a webinar with, uh, CCAO, which is the State of Ohio Commissioners Organization, the Safety and Justice Committee, uh, I am a member of that. Um, nothing earth breaking, um, they're looking at how many, uh, more jails they can build and, and I'm a little frustrated with that. Um, so, um, and have mentioned that. And so we not only need to have great facilities, as we know, our sheriff is trying to modernize things over there, but we also need to talk about, uh, that hopefully we won't have to just focus on that. And then also, um, CCAO, Metropolitan and Regional Affairs, I'm a member of that committee, which looks at transportation on the river and the barges and possible, uh, contamination and things like that. Um, so they had two meetings, I, uh, participated in that on a webinar. And then the Enterprise Zone Agreement, I met with Holly and Harry Blanton about, um, the possibility of, uh, Enterprise Zone Agreement that will be, uh, coming to the Commission itself. And then this morning Sharon Woods had a playground opening and it was, uh, specifically for disabled young people, but any young people can be a part of it. But they were, had their eye on those that, for whatever reason, and wheelchairs and things like that could not be part of a playground. And it was the children, we had to hold them back while all these politicians were talking. It was not an easy task. It was full of children in a wonderful day, um, represented the Commission there. And then, um, I met with Megan and Abby about the Office of Addiction Response and the status of where we are and what we can look forward to, as was mentioned earlier. And, uh, as the funding, we're hoping can get out sooner. Um, that will do it for me.
Thank you. First, I want to thank, uh, my intern, this is her last day, she's getting ready to go back to college, Northwestern, and, uh, Fajaro Elix Opay, if you stand, I just wanna thank you for everything. So I want to thank her for that and wish her the best as she goes back to, goes back to college. Um, the other thing I wanted to highlight, it was mentioned earlier, I'd also joined, uh, uh, Vice President Treehouse, I was also there for the Princeton High School Officials' Night. And like you said, they have it every year, it's a, a fun event. We're worried about the weather, where's Nick at? We were looking at the, the weather, if they had to pick, uh, had to push back the kickoff time, but, um, we did make it and, uh, it was great to see a lot of the elected officials throughout the county that were there and certainly continue to give a shout out to the superintendent and the, uh, principal for, uh, for the invitation. So really appreciated that. Um, also, I attended the, uh, installation of the new pastor at New Jerusalem Baptist Church, uh, and Reverend Richard Hughes and was excited. They had a huge turnout, huge crowd at New Jerusalem and certainly we, uh, appreciate and know the leadership that Reverend Lynch, uh, Junior, the father, uh, started that was with the church and it was, you know, on my understanding, they were in the basement and then they were able to move and grow and all that he has done and will continue to do, uh, for our city and our county, uh, and our community and civil rights and a number of other things. But it was good to welcome, uh, Richard Hughes, who is thirty and Reverend Lynch was thirty-one, he reminds him. So, um, it was just good to have him and, uh, his wife, Dr. Hughes, who is a dentist and my understanding will be working with the Cincinnati, uh, Health Department. So I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot of, of her as well. So that was, uh, great and amazing and was happy to present a proclamation on behalf of the Board. Uh, in addition, I also attended the Caribbean Music Jerk Festival. And boy, I hated, I couldn't stick around because boy, the food was smelling good and the music was readily getting going. And, uh, but I was happy to present a proclamation, um, on behalf of the Board. And, uh, they had a national reggae artist that came in and it was, I, I, you know, it was already a good crowd, but it got packed, they sat down there and it was just a great thing, uh, celebrating, uh, the Caribbean music and community and diversity, uh, in our county. So it was a, a great event at Washington Park. Also attended the, uh, Urban League of Southwest, uh, Ohio. And I want to give a big shout out to the CEO, Kristy Coons. Uh, that's a big, uh, fundraising event and she really has just taken it up to higher notches. It was a, a big, big, big deal. We were out at Sharonville Gavitcha Center and everyone looked beautiful, everybody had a great time and they had a great crowd and it was a, a great purpose. So we appreciate the work that the Urban League does on a, uh, ongoing basis in our community. So was just really excited to, uh, be a part of that. And also want to give a shout out that she highlighted, uh, black female catering businesses. So you could go around and you could taste food if you didn't know about their, their restaurant or their catering, uh, and it was just a lot of great, great food. So just wanted to, to highlight that as well. Um, also I met with, um, Sarah Irwin in HR about our 2025 benefits. The only reason I bring this up was one of the things I brought up was I had a little bit of concern on the pharmacy component because in the new proposed deal, if we go with it, it would change up some medications that you'll be able to get at, say, uh, Walgreens, Kroger's, CVS, kind of pushing you to go to Marathon. And I don't have any problem with Marathon, but I want to make sure that we're, uh, as I've indicated, not just pushing it's your only choice. And at the same time, we have a really fight going on right now. You can't hardly get medicine anymore. Uh, you go there and they added this and they added that and then they say your insurance don't cover it. You do the mailing, the mail ain't came, and this is people life and death. So I want to make sure what are the medicines that, that we won't be able to have the choices? You know, there's diabetes, there's, there's high blood pressure. So I just want to make sure, I know we do, um, generic already, that's fine, but I want to just make sure that whatever the medicines that won't be available that you have to get at Marathon won't be the ones that are high need. Because right now we're in a crisis with the pharmacies right now, uh, with people trying to be able to get the medicine. You get the prescription, but then when you get there, uh, happened to me, Walgreens say the medicine there and then I get there, then they said, who told you? I said, Walgreens did. They said, that couldn't be possible. While I was standing there, Walgreens gave me a text, medicine is in. So we have a crisis going on and I want to make sure whatever new plan we got, that it doesn't put our employees. Because one thing we're selling about working for us is that we got good benefits. That's a selling point. Um, so we've got to be able to keep those. So she's gonna go back and look at it, but I wanted my colleagues to be familiar that I had brought that up, uh, in looking forward, and Mr. Ludo, and looking forward to the response. The other thing I did, we had, uh, Veteran Services come in on Tuesday to present their, uh, budget request. Prior to that, I did have a meeting with the Veteran Services Commission who had, uh, asked to meet with me and, and broke some things down and I presented some questions as well. Uh, so, um, looking forward to, uh, hearing back on that. Um, let's see, what else do I have? Important dates, you heard one of them, five one three relief bus, healthy aging event. I'm gonna say it one more time. For seniors, it's gonna be September the twenty-fourth, ten to, ten AM to two PM. It's at the Word of Deliverance located, uh, in Forest Park, six nine three Fresno Road. Uh, so that will be happening, all of that is free. Uh, the other thing is there is an election and there is a new voter ID law. And it affects all citizens of Hamilton County who are voters, as well as the state of Ohio. You can no longer use your birth certificate, your social security card, your Duke Energy bill, they're not interested in any of that. You have to now have a Ohio driver's license and that license must be up to date. So you can't say, oh, my birthday came, it's no longer, eight thousand people votes were thrown away because of that. So please check that. Or you have to have a passport that's current or an Ohio, uh, state ID, which you could get free at the BMV, uh, or a US military ID. So those are the things that you have to take with the new rules. Um, voting by mail, you only have to put your four digits of your social security card, but there is a new directive and I don't think it's been rescinded. You cannot, if grandma can't get to the Board of Elections, you cannot drop off grandma's ballot unless you go to the Board of Elections before four PM and sign a paper that's almost like an affidavit. Uh, that's what, uh, Secretary of State LaRose just put in and it wasn't put in until the Friday, right before Labor Day, when you were thinking about your hot dogs and your ribs and your... So I want you to make sure you understand, uh, they, they're talking about possible jail time. So you could go to our Board of Elections online and you can type in your name and you can look at your license and you can make sure that you're on the roll. A hundred and fifty-eight thousand people have been purged, seventeen thousand in Hamilton County. So go in and put your name in, it's real easy. Uh, the Board of Elections has made it real easy here in Hamilton County and you can double check, uh, your ID, so I wanted to make sure of that. Lastly, uh, Mr. Ludo, I know on Tuesday we're gonna be looking at, um, I guess the master plan as it relates to the stadium. But I wanted to bring up something that I found was a little disheartening because I think the relationship and the tone has been sometimes one-sided. Now you all remember we, when we were playing, we were winning, we were playing for the AFC Championship. We were playing the Kansas City Chiefs. We were going to Kansas City to play them. There was a constituent that hit me and said, can we have a watch party? I brought it up because I thought it was a fabulous idea in a way that we could use our stadium where taxpayers could come and go in the stadium for free. And I, boy, I was faulting everything, you pull that up. So now, do you have the other ones? Can you, you only have that one? I thought it was just one slot. But I had asked for a watch party. Took it all the way to so-called, this is Paul Brown Stadium Limited. They sent something to us and claimed we can't have it. Claimed the NFL said we can't have a watch party. Oh, people were fighting, we can't get the staff, we can't get it done, we can't go in there, we can't do it, when we were talking about something free for the taxpayers. Then we went to, um, in addition to that, we went to Detroit and Detroit had a watch party. Detroit had a watch party. And then today I see this here called one of a kind, watch party. Same team, Kansas City. Rerun, then took the idea, now all of a sudden it's so fabulous, you can take that down. It's such a fabulous, I was hoping we had the, the proof that showed we went for a wa- watch party, they told, we, I was told no, I'm not gonna say that, I was told no. I was told we ran it up to the Bengals and the NFL and supposedly the NFL told us no. Supposedly, I don't have nothing with Roger Goodell's signature, only have the Bengals on here. I don't have Roger Goodell's signature. Then we went back, we didn't make the, the Super Bowl, then here comes Detroit. They have a watch party. Their fans can be a part of it. The NFL supposedly was okay with it. So I don't know if Roger Goodell really said no. Now we come back and now we got a watch party for ninety-nine dollars and we gonna charge for this and ten percent off here. So was it the idea? I need to know what's going on. Could we really not have a watch party? Or was it because somebody can't make some money off the watch party? See, mine was free for the taxpayers. We paid ninety-five percent for this stadium, all bills is for us. Five percent, the ownership pays. So I'm saying, hey, let's have some free for the taxpayers, for the fans. And they went, everybody went over their way to show why we can't do it. Now we're back, Kansas City again, and we only paying ni- and now we got, now it's ninety-nine dollars and ten percent off and we could do this and we could do that. But now it's okay. We don't even have to take no vote. We don't get no say. We don't get no say. So I'm saying before we go into these new negotiations, and if we're gonna pay ninety-five percent, I don't know when a commissioner come up with something, we got to fight it, we can't do it, we ain't got no workers. Yeah, there it is, you got the watch party was, that was January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, same team, Kansas City. Then we come back, they, they said NFL told us no, did they really? I really need Roger Goodell's signature. But we said, it was sent to us, they told us no. Detroit comes right back. NFC Conference Championship on Sunday, January twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-four, one year, uh, two years later. And then we come back now. Talking about ninety-nine dollars and you get twenty-five dollars off of hot dogs and hamburgers and twenty-five dollars off the gift shop. You can take that down now. What I'm saying is, that's a slap in the face to the taxpayers of Hamilton County. And we got to stop when they said, we can't, y'all can't do nothing, but then they put up names on buildings without talking to us? Naming rights and we still ain't got the, how much it is? Have events in there, we don't even know what the revenue is? But at the end of the day, they hand us a bill and say, you got to pay ninety-five percent of all expenses over here. And we're only paying five percent. So I just wanted to bring that up. My question is, was it that we couldn't do it? Was it because, who came up with the idea? Was it because w- we can't do it because you wanted it free for the taxpayers? And we want to make some money? So it's a bad idea when it's for the taxpayers, but it's a great idea if we can make some money? We can't go into negotiations like this. At least for me. I can't go in here and represent the taxpayers and the taxpayers keep getting screwed. I mean, do, do we own the building or not? Are we paying the ninety-five percent or not? Are we in a real partnership or not? So even if we come with, here's the pretty pictures and here's, I, I, I need, where's the lease? Where is it that makes sure the taxpayers can benefit? But this is, this is something. I mean, this was all over, this made national news. We had a watch party idea and we the only city that they claim, now NFL, if I call them tomorrow, they probably say, I don't have nothing on record that said no. And we come back with this, oh, I've got a great idea, let's have a watch party. Oh my God, this is the greatest idea ever and now we can make some money. Oh, it's a bad idea because you wanted to have the watch party on behalf of the people, the taxpayers, and you wanted it free. So I wanted to bring that up as we're going into negotiations, hopefully a new lease, long-term lease. But for me, it ain't the pretty pictures, the taxpayers don't have access. This was an idea that came from a taxpayer. And boy, I was fault like hell to stop. And every other city was doing, this other cities are doing it. And now we back with the same, it's like Groundhog Day, we back with the same idea and we ain't saying nothing about it. We just quiet about it and now it's, my idea came, it was free, now it's ninety-nine dollars, plus twenty-five dollars off on concessions. And parking, got to be paid for. So, Mr. Ludo, I wanted you to take this back because it's not the first instance. We see it with the naming rights. We see it now with this watch party. And we just gotta get a better relationship, a better deal. Can't be ours when the bills are done, it's the taxpayers. And when it's time to make revenue, it's private ownership. So I wanted to put that out there, I want to be transparent about what I'm saying, I don't want to go to executive session and I got, I'm out here in open. Because at the end of the day, it's public financing, called public people with public money. If you buy some bubble gum, you're helping to pay for this thing. Because we're using the tax- Because we're using the tax that taxes everybody. Not just, ain't no, just homeowner. Everybody pays for it. So I just wanted to say that, when I see these things, it's very troubling to me. Very troubling. And I got lots of calls, lots of calls, from diverse people about this. So as we go into it on Tuesday, when we're looking at other stuff, but I wanted to put that on the table.
Yes, I'm on next, Commissioner.
Yes.
And you're absolutely right. As we see, you did bring it up in twenty-two. And so when I heard it yesterday about the watch party, I was, I just couldn't believe it. And then I was thinking, well, don't they have to use county employees? Don't we have to approve that county employees are gonna be working extra, longer hours? This was not planned. This is not part of a regular season game. So how did they get the approval to use any of our workers? I mean, they're gonna do it without workers, or hire their own workers? Or we have contracts with our workers? And so are we gonna have to foot the bill for this extra staff that's working on a day not normally set for them to work? And those are the questions, that's some of the questions that I had. How can you do it by yourself? I mean, who are you, I mean, who are you gonna use? We didn't approve it. We didn't approve anybody to work over, you know? So, Jeff, that's my question. Yeah.
I can follow up on that for you, Commissioners. I don't, I don't know enough about the event to know the staff that will be working it in terms of whether it's PBSL Inc. staff, which, as you indicated, Commissioner, are county employees but are managed under a management agreement contract by the team.
But it's still additional.
Yeah, so I...
Work that they would not have been doing.
Right, so I don't know whether it's those staff, whether it's primarily contracted vendors and concession staff, that type of thing. But I can, again, we just learned about this yesterday as well. I can follow up on it and get back to the board.
And it's ridiculous. It is. I think it's a slap in the face. We shouldn't have to hear about it on television or read about it in the newspaper. And I absolutely agree that we cannot move forward with that attitude.
Thank you. Yeah, if you could get that, I mean, these are very good questions that's being asked. And then we've got extra lights are on, you know? We're paying those bills. But it seems to me, right now, the relationship, we get stuff at least, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but we get stuff at the last minute. 4:49, here they come with something. We go to bed, and we wake up, here they got something else. I mean, how can we be quote-unquote partners? This ain't a partnership. This is a runaway. And that's what, as our board, we've been asking these hard questions. But, you know, we can't really move forward if that's what's gonna be happening all the time. It's just the relationship got to change. I don't know what they was doing when all of us wasn't down here. But we gotta show that this ain't, we're not just gonna get a house away. You know, the people who signed it originally, none of us was on the lease. But when it was around, I mean, they just gave, they gave the taxpayers away. And we ain't making no money that day. We ain't making nothing. Nothing's coming back to our taxpayers to help pay for some of this stuff. So wanted to bring that out as we're going into. I don't want us to get stuck on Tuesday, just the pretty pictures and all that. We got to get, we gotta start off with, it's gotta be a mutual respect. And right now, it's, it's a seesaw. We not getting any respect. And so I just wanted to put that out, especially if you're saying, you just went to bed and found out it, just like we finding out about it. That's, that's, we can't do that. We just can't do that. So, Mr. Aludo, you have any, it's on you now.
Commissioners, I don't have any by leave agenda items today. Just one comment, because this'll be the last meeting before the Employee Appreciation Day that's coming up on Wednesday, the eighteenth. So I just wanted to, first and foremost, thank the board for its investment in our employees. To also thank the Employee Advisory Committee. We'll have a little bit more to say after the event, but this'll be the last meeting before we actually have it. So I just wanted to announce that it's on the eighteenth, over lunch hour, right? So we're taking advantage of people's lunch hour. I wanted to thank the Employee Advisory Committee for all the work that they put into, into planning that. It's a great event. We're working with a lot of partners on the Court Street, in the Court Street area, to pull it off. I know in the past, we've had, as we've been conducting this event, we've had random folks passersby just stop in and say, "Who's doing this?" When we say Hamilton County, they say, "How do I get a job application?" So, so it's a great event. Want to thank the Commissioners. There is an item on the agenda today related to it, so I just wanted to raise that, from that perspective. But no other comments or by leaves today, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question.
Yes. Vice President Dreehouse.
Yeah, just very quickly, I got an email from a constituent, and it was on my mind as well. And I don't expect you to answer now, but there was a story about the governor talking about how to deal with juveniles that are going into the justice system. And there was conversation about the three Cs being part of an initiative of the governor. I don't know anything about it. I read it in the paper. Now I've gotten some emails about it. And so I'm wondering if we can get an update. I don't know if it's from JV Court, or the sheriff, or the administration, just to get us a better understanding of, or maybe we don't have an understanding of what the governor was referring to. But as we, you know, are talked about in that way, I'm hopeful that we will be part, like, sitting at the table when some of these decisions are made about, you know, what our facilities are now, what we need, and what the state's participation in that is. So hopefully, then we can get, eventually, I don't know when the information will become available, but we certainly want to be in the loop.
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you. And we are following up on that exact issue as well, in terms of what the state is proposing, what category of youth they're proposing it for. As the board is aware, we are talking about the reopening and the reinvesting in Hillcrest. We also have 2020, which, where does the facility that the governor has, and the state has proposed, where does that fit into the hierarchy and the continuum, if you will, here? So we're following up on those exact questions, and we'll get a formal report back to the board because of that, that story.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could just comment on...
Yes, Commissioner Dumas.
There's a link that you can print off the report itself, the working group. And I looked at the working group, and there were, I don't know, maybe eleven people. There was only one representative from Hamilton County, and that was Neil Tillo, who's retired and a consultant. So I was just a bit surprised that they didn't have two or three from Hamilton County, but I'm extremely interested in that, too. So you could print off the report. Did you get a copy of that?
I haven't got it.
Okay.
I'll look for the report. Yep, okay. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. Regular agenda, we've got, Mr. Aludo, a budget adjustment.
Just one item on the regular agenda. Mr. Bergen is gonna walk us through Budget Adjustment Number Thirty-One, which is a budget adjustment for various capital repairs throughout the county.
Commissioners, this is twenty-four point three million dollars' worth of funding for another, another phase of capital projects pursuant to our Capital Improvement Plan. This is starting a couple of big ones that have been lingering for a while. So this is exterior repairs at the eight-hundred Broadway Building, roof and facade repairs to the courthouse, as well as a chiller, some fire door repairs in various buildings, and a fuel tank at the Justice Center. All of this is outlined in our Capital Improvement Plan and is consistent with that plan.
Okay. I'll open it up. Vice President Dreehouse, any questions or comments?
Well, just one. Given what just happened related to vacating in the future potentially, the Alms and Depke Building, the building up on William Howard Taft, the DDS Building also in Walnut Hills. This Broadway Building is old, and as you, as we can all see, it needs a lot of repair. And it's probably the one building in our portfolio that has some potential to be something else pretty cool, maybe a boutique hotel or something like that. And so I know it's not on the agenda, and we always talk about the portfolio of buildings that the county has and the disposition of those buildings. But I just wanna always keep in mind that this building in particular, we, you know, we should always be looking at that and opportunities to potentially move from this building and get JV Court into a building that's frankly more appropriate for what they're doing, and a building that doesn't cost so much for the taxpayers. So it just reminded me of it, because it's, this one in particular is challenging, as is Alms and Depke, right? And, but we've already moved on that one. So I just want to put that out there. This is a study that was done, gosh, when I was first here, we had a study of all the buildings, how old they were, how much we needed in capital or repair. And I'm glad we're addressing these, don't get me wrong. But this one is just, just one of the more challenging of all. So just want to put that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
And that was my question. Are these immediate repairs that have to be done? Because there has, has been some changes since we discussed it. Like you said, when you first came or whatever. But are these things, like, is the roof actually leaking? You know, I'm saying that to put, invest money into a building, our buildings that we may not habitate. I was just wondering about, does a reevaluation, we have to pay for that. But is this something that's an emergency situation?
Emergency probably would be a bit too far. But yes, as I understand it, yeah, there are pieces of the courthouse roof that are leaking. So this does fix things like that. These are repairs that have been sort of on the agenda for some time. The facade repairs have been assessed and are in violation of city policies around, around the state of facades on taller buildings. Both of these buildings, as I understand it, my very rudimentary understanding of facilities, is that both of these buildings are dealing with facade issues that are similar to what we funded at the repairs to the museum center. So it's these older buildings where those exterior concrete or stone surfaces are beginning to come away from there, from the scaffold or the steel structures underneath. And so these are, these are, these are big repairs that have been needed for some time. Yeah.
Okay, everybody good? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item number one.
Second?
Monsieur Reeves?
Yes.
Monsieur Dreehouse?
Yes.
Monsieur Sumner Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Aludo, the consent agenda?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll walk through your consent agenda briefly. Item number two is a resolution for town retention activities under the board at thirty-five thousand dollars. Item number three is a credit card fee at Fifth Third Bank, twenty-nine dollars. Item number four is a resolution, is an agreement for fire alarm maintenance at Paycor Stadium, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Item number five is the purchase of a Chevy Blazer for the Clerk of Courts for twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Item number six is authority, authorizing payment to MedCert's for training for SNAP consumers for ten thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Item seven is Duke Energy's request for easements off of the Beauchamp Levy. That's just a recommendation to receive for the record. Items eight and nine are environmental services grants. One is the receipt of grant money related to a Department of Transportation grant for the installation of electric charging stations at the nine-one-one center. Item number nine is actually a grant being given to support composting efforts with various local farms, Lincoln Heights and Milford. Item ten, items ten and eleven actually are approving, approving and journalizing collective bargaining agreements with the Carpenters, Carpenter's Foreman, as well as AFSME JFS. Item numbers, let's see, twelve and thirteen are approving tentative collective bargaining agreements with the Teamsters and the Engineers Office and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Association, representing the enforcement officers and court services officers. Item fourteen is a resolution authorizing the addition of a position to the Table of Organization in Planning and Development. That is an Assistant Field Operations Superintendent position. Just as a side note on that, that position will not be backfilled. So it's, the expectation is keeping the size of the office status quo. Item number fifteen is, items fifteen through eighteen are JFS agreements with various entities to provide workforce training for SNAP consumers. This includes state tested nursing association assistance training. It includes construction and hospitality training, and various other training, workforce training with various partners. That was fifteen through eighteen. Night, item number nineteen is an amendment to an agreement for youth employment services with Talbert House at one point two million dollars. Item number twenty is an amendment to an agreement with Cohere for consulting services, nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Item twenty-one is a resolution, this is amendment number three with Step Higher Inc., or Nella's Place, for independent living services at two hundred thousand dollars. Item twenty-two is a renewal of an agreement with RTC Resource Acquisition Corporation for residential treatment services for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Item twenty-three is an agreement with Justice Works Ohio for family preservation services at two hundred thousand dollars. Item twenty-four is a renewal of an agreement with Habilitation Centers LLC for residential treatment services at two hundred thousand dollars. Item twenty-five is authorizing a contract with Beach Acres for parent education services at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Twenty-six is an amendment to an agreement with HMIH Cedar Crest for residential treatment services at a hundred thousand dollars. There is a renewal of an MOU between Juvenile Court and Job and Family Services for the reimbursement of placement costs at Juvenile Court for five million dollars. Item twenty-eight is a single-source agreement with Right of Passage Operating Residential Care Facility at Desert Lily for residential treatment services at two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Twenty-nine is an agreement authorizing a zoning map amendment. This is my case Miami twenty-twenty-four dash oh-two, James Landing, from EE Planned Retail to DD Planned Multiple Residence. Item thirty is authorizing a grant agreement for the sheriff for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for medicated, medication-assisted treatment programming in our recovery pods. And that is your consent agenda, Commissioners. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll open up Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Can I get more information, and I hope JFS is on the line, related to item number twenty-eight?
I believe Laura is probably on the line, or John. I know John is here, so one of them, John's coming up. So John Nelson can address that, Commissioner.
Commissioner Dreehouse, the Right of Passage contract, that is probably a renewal for where a child might be already placed. And this is located in Arizona. It's a placement center in Arizona. It's a residential treatment facility.
Okay. Okay. I, this Rights of Passage has been challenging for here locally? So I was surprised to see that we're, I understand this is in a different state?
Yes, so they're, they're a big national company, and they have facilities all over the country. So we terminated the agreement that we had with them here at Hillcrest. But we've continued to use other facilities that are Right of Passage facilities that we've not had any issues with. And so this might be one of those facilities, so.
That's all I have?
Sorry? Commissioner Dumas?
Just a couple of comments. Items ten through thirteen, I just wanted to give kudos out for our staff and our lawyers that have been working. They're all about collective bargaining agreements, one with the Carpenters, another one with our JFS workers through AFSME and AFL-CIO, and then the Engineers Office, the Teamsters, and also an agreement with the Sheriff's Office. And so it's just, it's not easy to go through this collective bargaining. And I thank all the participants, the union workers, and, as I said, staff and lawyers who take their time and work together and collaborate to make these happen. So I'm just really happy about those. And then the JFS items, I just wanted to indicate that not only do they serve our children, but they also are providing training for our parents. We sometimes think that people that are on SNAP, they want to be. Some don't want to be. They'd like to do better. And so I was looking at fifteen through eighteen, the train, even though the training is mandatory for a lot of the parents, but hopefully, they can get out of that and do other things. Some of the trainings was, CAA was providing diversity of training. And then there was training for state nursing assistance, patient, patient care assistance, and also construction and hospitality. And that's, I just wanted to point that out, even though, like I said, most of it is mandatory for some parents to have to do it, but hopefully, it will give them the skills that they need, that they may not need SNAP again. And those were my only comments.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna bring up the collective bargaining as well, but concur with those, with those comments in terms of having the unions... with those comments in terms of having the unions and our staff being able to come together. And we're happy to support this. That's on the agenda today. The other thing that I had was, wanted to just bring attention to item number four, because I know it says alarm, fire alarm maintenance, but it goes back to my point of the things that the taxpayers are on the hook for. And these are important things. But, you know, one week is the insurance of the stadiums, and that went up, because we found if they get more people coming to the game, we got to pay more. And that's coming from the taxpayers. Now we're on here with fire alarm maintenance. We've got to pay for that. And I'm willing to pay for it, but I'm just saying, these are things that the taxpayers are on the hook for. So we have to have a better relationship. We can't have it, we own it with all the problems and all the bills. And then it's privately held when it's time to make the revenue and utilize it. So I just wanted to highlight, we'll be voting again today on something that is for that. In addition, item number seven is an easement. And I know that, you know, off of Beauchamp, and that's dandy, and we're going to give them the easement. But a lot of, I just want to make sure, because I saw where Duke Energy is going up, trying to go up, proposing to go up on people's Duke Energy bills. Now, we just went up last year. People out here barely can hang on. Barely can get bacon and eggs and trying to keep the property taxes, trying to hold on to their houses. And now we're talking about another increase, and a lot of the increase, what I saw, and maybe I just when I read, when I read it in the paper, dealt with infrastructure. So I'm not saying this is it, but I don't want to be giving easements away, and then they come back and say, now we got to charge the ratepayers more, because we want to do something now. Or we need infrastructure somewhere. So I just want to be a little more cautious in my votes, because I don't want to have anything where the ratepayers, all of a sudden, because I saw a lot of infrastructure in there. We want to do this, and we want to do that, and we, and those are good. But, you know, it's just like somebody's house, they might want to do some extra paint, but they can't do it right now, because they're trying to hang on. So I just wanted to bring it up, that I want to be aware if there's anything that we're providing, what we're voting for, that will later become an infrastructure or something that now will be passed on to the ratepayers. I would like to be alerted so that I could be a little more thorough, because I just can't imagine what people are going to do. CAA could barely keep people, you know, they got, you can go to CAA and they'll help you. I mean, people around the building at CAA trying to get help with the current bill. Now we're talking about going up, and it's not a small going up. So I wanted to put that on the table. And I understand, well, we got infrastructure to do, we want to improve, it's good you want to improve, but we need to improve on these rates, because we can't afford it. So I just wanted to, to bring that up, because I know the easement itself won't cost anything, but I just want to make sure, because they're talking about infrastructure and these kind of things. And I just don't know how the average, everyday citizen out here is going to be able to survive with the rates going up. Now, I mean, just, it hasn't even been five years. It hasn't even been a term of, the county commissioner even get four years, you didn't even give him four years, you back with something higher at a time when the people can't hardly hang on. They're, they're hanging on by shoestrings. So I just wanted to bring that up. I know it's nothing that we're voting on that will affect this today.
If it would be, and not to discount anything you said, it's completely separate context, but if it would help, just very briefly, just people who might be at home are wondering what we're doing with Duke. As you mentioned, we're giving them an easement, in this case, to replace a gas line that's running across a piece of county-owned property that currently, to our, to the best of everyone's knowledge, does not have an easement going to it yet. So that's, it doesn't discount anything you said. I just wanted people to know what, what we were actually doing, what we're doing with them there.
Yeah. No, I understand that. I just wanted, they'll, we'll give them the easement, we'll work with it. And then next thing you know, here now they got to come in and do some infrastructure. And then this cost that they're going up on people, they claim, because they got to improve their infrastructure. And I'm not saying they might not. Some people say that the car needs a little extra, but they're going to hang on until they can afford to do something else. So I just want to, if there's anything, this may not be it, but if there's anything that we do have that could potentially have a cost associated down the road, if you could alert me, just so I could be, I want to keep my eyes a little more open than maybe it's been in the past. That's all I'm asking. Those are the only things that, that I had. Vice President Dreehouse asked the other question that I had earlier, so that has been answered. So I am ready to make a motion to approve items two through thirty.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Okay, well, I will amend my motion. I'll make a motion to approve and accept for the record items two through thirty.
One second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for that. And then now we will, I'll make a motion to go into an executive session pursuant to a higher revised code, section one, two, one, two, two, G two, to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.